But it also has to.
So.
Thanks.
What's it about?
There was, yeah.
Um, well.
True. That's like the wideband kind of thing.
I was in three.
Hi Christine.
Um, but everybody has kind of struck.
Or. Christine.
They not one of them.
Well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
How are you?
Be better?
They do.
Was it hard to last year or is it harder than two last year?
Hi Christine. Can you tell me if you can hear me?
Oh, thanks.
Christine, can you hear me? We'll find out later.
Christine.
Yeah.
Before we start the message.
Is it like shines down in odd ways? I look like I'm.
Christine, this is real quick Seth, can you hear me? Christine, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you.
I like your haircut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I can't hear you. What's happening? Hi.
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 I'm here.
Oh.
Here we are.
Okay.
Hi, Mary Ann and Christine, we're just waiting a few more minutes for the chair and then we'll get started. You guys can stay for a little bit and you'll see when I turn the cameras on.
Okay, we're here, we're good. Oh.
Hey, you there?
Hi. How are you?
Uh, my name has a typo.
Let me see, where is that?
Yeah, okay, thanks. How do I fix it?
Oh, what, what do they have? Are you like Raquel Welch or?
No, no, I'm sorry. Oh, great. Craig just texted me. I'm like, great.
Well, who are you?
How do I fix? I'm not fixing it.
No, we know who you are.
Yeah, right?
I totally know who you are.
Oh my God. I'm so cold.
And the system does record until while we're waiting Seth, just so you guys know.
About who we are. Great, so, love it.
What?
Your hair, Zo's hair.
I put it up.
Oh, your hair looks good too. How's mine?
Oh, no, like Zo's hair, doesn't it look pretty?
So nice.
It's a lot off.
Right.
I got caught in the rain.
It was bad too. Christine, if you knew my last two days as an old lady, you wouldn't even know.
No, I.
I've been going like, I have met more doctors. I drove around Yale like 500 times yesterday. It was like, it was so funny.
Are you?
What, huh?
No, I can't. I don't know how to fix it.
Where, where, I'm trying to see where your name is.
Oh, maybe I could fix it, hold on.
All right.
Delete. Let me take off the, hold on. I did it. I changed it.
Fixed it? Well, well, like what, what?
I'm so smart sometimes.
I amaze myself sometimes.
Sometimes I do. I think I did it.
Sometimes I do.
Poor, our poor Stella, like our dog.
Not bad.
Well, she had this, like these two huge bumps on, like where her whiskers are. Like sis almost.
Yeah, like, um.
Three hundred and, three hundred and twenty-one dollars later.
Yeah.
It, it, she's on antibiotics and so they. I, I, they don't know. I think it's just like an infected whisker. Somehow, and they tested her. Are we the only two on Zoom?
I guess.
Um. I think. Um. But they sing to her when they were putting a needle in it.
Did you find us? We're here.
Okay. Hello everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the Madison Board of Education regular meeting to order. It is about seven thirty-five. Happy to see you all. Please rise and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to. There we go. All right, so the second item on the agenda is our school and community session. And our second, two A is to yield the gavel to our. Apologize. Throw salt down at the driveway. It's a great way to make sense. We just. We apologize. Okay, we're just in school community session. Okay.
We are caught on the budgetary.
All right.
So the board welcomes public comment at our meetings, whether in person or online. We ask that you state your name and your address. Comments are limited to three minutes. Uh, we're happy to hear from our community, but if not, we expect that the board or administration will respond to public comments. If necessary, any member will be contacted for follow-up. If you're joining us online, we ask that you raise your hand and you will be called upon. Is there anyone in person who would like to speak this evening? Anyone online would like to speak this evening? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the Wood Event Student Representatives Reports. Eli and Brooke, thank you. Yeah, apparently here on time, so please your reports.
Yeah, last week for groups of senior advisory, um, every group had two genuine alumni come back and talk about, um, their experience in college so far and just some tips that they wish they had known before starting their college journey. Um, tomorrow, very exciting day. It's a half day for everyone. We have a parent-teacher conferences. Um, and lastly, the class of 2028 had their freshman orientation, so their parents were invited into the school and the kids were thrown around. And this is the first time, this is on after-school hours. And January eighteenth marked the midpoint of the year, which is crazy as a senior. It's going by so fast. It's really exciting, but it's almost over.
And since we're now officially halfway through the school year, the freshmen through junior students are picking their 2024 to 2025 schedules. And some upcoming events that are going on, um, tomorrow night at seven thirty, the orchestra concert, they're having orchestra, orchestra concert. They're pushing for high attendance through having orchestra members talk at the PTO meetings to try to get the word out there. Another event is that the girls' basketball night, senior night is Thursday night. And Mr. Saito and A.D. Mr. Farrell are trying to also push awareness about these types of senior nights through morning announcements, so they'll try to add those in soon. Looking beyond January, um, February sixth, Ms. Coil, who's like the career counselor and college counselor, planned a career expo for the juniors. And this event, um, people from a ton of different walks of life are going to the juniors so that the juniors can kind of get idea of what kind of career path they're interested in. And this will be happening during the school day, so all the juniors will be able to attend.
Great. Questions? Thank you. Very much. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Cott.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman Baskin, and thank you, Eli and, uh, and Brooke. Enjoy the afternoon tomorrow. So, very exciting tonight. We have a, a presentation for the board from, um, ad hoc committee that just completed its, um, work a few weeks ago. And, um, joining us at the, at the podium are Rebecca Frost, building principal, and Amelia Markthu, also known as Millie, who, um, is the committee chair. And so, um, Millie and Becky are going to present the work of the committee. I know we have some committee members watching online as, as well. Uh, Chairman Klassen and myself were, um, executive members and Kathy Miller was a, uh, a voting member representing the board event. So, thank you both for being here. We'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you so much for having us. So wonderful to be here. Um, as you said, I'm Amelia Markthu. This is Ms. Frost. Um, we are representing the ad hoc school committee. Um, so we had a total of seven voting members. This was, um, uh, Seth Klassen, Dr. But, oh, um, those are not voting members. Uh, Kathy Miller, Rebecca Frost, Alicia Dunbar, Dunbar, oh wait, um, Ju- Jessica Joseph is with us, Deborah Thomas, Jim Kenny, and, um, myself. Um, so we were tasked with recommending three to five names to. Um, we developed this, these recommendations with the input and assistance from the community. And we evaluated these suggestions from the community using, um, the criteria set forth in policy seven five five one.
So to give you a little bit more detail and background about our process, uh, the committee met several times throughout the fall and winter. All of the meetings were noticed and open to the public. So thank you, Zo, for sending all of those communications out for us. Um, it really kicked off with a month-long period for community members to email, mail, or phone in naming suggestions. And I believe the email address got over one hundred and fifty submissions for suggestions and ideas and support for various names. Um, the committee took those one hundred and fifty emails and narrowed it down to a list of fifteen names. And then we saw further public input on those fifteen. Um, one of the most fascinating parts of the process was an actual public comment, uh, session here in the Hamel Room that ended up being standard room only, um, where people came to give support or, um, to advocate for something else or, um, a name perhaps not to be used, um, as, as part of our selection. It was really cool just to see the passion from community members. I learned a lot, just the history of the town. People brought the news clippings. I saw a picture of Walter C. Tolson and, um, I don't know if it was Dr. Brown. No, it was Jeffrey, J. Milton Jeffrey shaking hands at one point. So just, um, really nice process to be a part of. And then the committee took those fifteen names and just, uh, a week or two ago narrowed it down to a final three. Um, to get it there, to get down to those three, we also, of course, couldn't do this process as Kathy Miller suggested. We have to get the kids involved. It was a great idea, Kathy, and get the kids involved, we did. Um, at Jeffrey and Ryerson, I created a slideshow with pictures of the new building, um, a little bit of the policy information, what is a committee? And all of the teachers presented that to students and we had little voting, um, sessions within each class at Jeffrey and at Ryerson as well. Um, I pulled the Jeffrey staff just to see sort of where their heads were at. So all of that information was shared with the committee as well. And, um, really was neat for the kids to feel like they have some ownership in it. Unfortunately, none of the student names made it into the top three, but.
Really good names though.
There are, yeah, and there's so many good ones, so. Um, but it was exciting for them to be a part of the process. So we do have it narrowed down to three for you. And when we were evaluating these names, we really wanted to make sure, A, obviously we need to follow board of ed policy. But one, something that was very specific to Madison, um, something that would be relevant, meaningful, uh, able to be pronounced by pre-K to five, uh, fifth grade students. Um, something that was inclusive, um, something again that would be unique and, and kind of stand out. So, um, as a committee, we had a lot of debate on just the pros and cons of naming the building after a person um, versus a place or a thing, and there are certainly pros and cons. Um, we wanted to offer the board of ed, um, options for both. So you'll see that reflected in our, in our top three names. Are you ready for it?
So our final three names recommended are Neck River Elementary School, Marguerite P. Bowes Elementary School, and Hemen Asset Elementary School.
So we'll give you a little bit of context and background, um, as to why each of these three were selected. Um, the Neck River runs through the back of the actual property where the school is going to be built. So again, very unique, very, um, very specific to the location. Um, it's a neutral name, again, not tied with a party or a person, so just kind of something that everybody can hopefully connect to. Uh, simple to spell, simple to say, was a top pick. Uh, Marguerite Bowes is a community member still living in town. You might know her better as Taffy Bowes. Um, she had a plethora of people come out to the public comment information, um, session night, um, advocating for her because her work has been so impactful in the town. Um, years ago, she was a Madison Public Schools teacher. She taught fourth grade at Academy School. Um, she then worked from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and fifteen for Madison Youth and Family Services. And she really was, um, the initiator of many student groups, really supporting full child social emotional work um, that are still around today, peer helpers, safe rides, peer advocates. Um, again, she's, she lives in town still. She volunteers in town, gets one through the system. So she thought, we thought, um, she would be a really good representation of somebody that, um, would represent our town well.
Um, and, um, Hemen Asset Elementary School also has something to do with the area that we live in. Um, it has a Native American background, which honors, honors the, um, people who lived here before us, and it was also very popular within the community. So we are so excited to present these to you and we are looking forward to hearing what you pick.
Yes, best of luck. If you have any other questions about the process, we're happy to take them now. Go ahead, Diane.
So were these the top three choices from the community as well?
Not necessarily, no. We didn't have a final vote with the community or, you know, teachers, students, um, kids. This was really the seven voting members after hearing it all, reading the emails, listening to kids, listening to teachers. Um, this was the outcome of the votes from the seven voting members.
And was there a reason that you did three? Because we said three to five, and I'm just wondering if like the other ones were just like, nah, we didn't really like them, or that these three just stood out or?
I don't know that it, I, I think we were, I think honestly it came from a good place of, let's give you the top three, you know, the, the, you know, you really can't go wrong with any of these three and sort of help you kind of by narrowing it down as much as possible.
Yeah, um, they were definitely all very popular within the community, although we didn't have a final vote and, um, they were all just very strong and spoke to all of us, so.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Um, I know that in the committee, um, and all of the nominations from the public that came in for Taffy Bowes came in under Taffy Bowes, and I know I, I think Zo did extra, um, research afterwards to find out that her full name is Marguerite P. Bowes.
Correct.
Um, would the school be named Marguerite P. Bowes or Taffy Bowes and, or I mean, considering she's, you know, she's still with us, would she have a choice or?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Zo.
If that name were suggested.
Yeah, Zo did contact Taffy.
I called her, asked for her full legal name, explained that is typically how we name schools, pointing out Walter C. Tolson, J. Milton Jeffrey, et cetera, and asked for her full name. Which is actually longer than that. A lot of middle names. We have a lot to talk about it. And that is where we ended.
So she had Opa in that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. What else? Questions? So we are not voting on this tonight. This was the presentation.
Yeah, one of the big compliments of the committee is oftentimes committee work does not stay on track. You, you guys stayed, uh, stayed completely on track. Yes, no surprise. But, uh, stayed completely on track in terms of the timeline that was set out, um, and shared with the board, I think, back in September. And so the plan now is to set the board to vote in this next meeting, which will be February thirteenth.
Are these listed in order of preference?
It's just random.
It's a top list?
Is there one that rose to the top for the committee? Who had to write them?
If I were to speak just on, um, I guess what was talked about most or most people kind of wrote, oh, I really like that, I would probably say Neck River was more popular over Hemen Asset, but I, I wouldn't want to speak for the whole committee.
Yeah. Okay.
That's funny. I was actually going to say Hemen Asset.
I thought too.
Um, but again, we all have such different perspectives. Um, I think that there was definitely some strong voices within the community, uh, the committee that thought, um, a, Hemen Asset or Neck River would be better than naming it after someone. Um, but, and that wasn't the majority of the community coming around.
I pulled my PTO on Tuesday night just for fun last week and it was a tie between Neck River and Bowes Elementary.
Oh.
Yes.
Um, I also want to just make my thanks to, you know, it's always wonderful when community members come out and, um, join these committees and give their time. Um, and, um, you know, I thought it was a great process. It was handled very well. Uh, it was very efficient. Thank you so much, Zo, for also, you know, doing all the, the legwork for the, for the committee. Um, and it was just a very positive experience and, um, I want to congratulate and thank you guys for your good work, including those of you online.
Just find the help.
Yeah.
I think it's also unique to, I'll just point this out, to have a high school student lead a, a committee that's made up of adults. And so, um, really that was a brave view to offer, you know, several months ago. So thank you very much for doing that. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Nice to see you, Allison.
Yeah, right. All, all in the team, yeah. Our next item was, uh, um, typically at this, this meeting, we would, um, discuss the budget. So I know there was. Discuss the budget, so I know there was, you know, a number of questions that came in um over the budget process. We have Stacy, the finance director with us tonight. Um, and uh we provided answers uh for the questions that that came in. This was an other opportunity if there was any. Digital questions or thoughts um to share. I know there's an action item later, but. Wanted to put that on and thank the board's members for your work throughout that process. I know there's a lot of documents that we gave you, link the information and. Appreciate the um engagement and uh excellent questions that came forward.
Thank you. So we will have an opportunity to discuss uh the budget um shortly after uh. Shortly after this, uh there's only a couple of quick. Agenda items in between. Um, one is board member comments, and I believe we do have some comments this. This time, Diane, did you want to share something with us?
So I am on the um Tiger Branding Committee regarding the mascot logo um change. And so I just wanted to give an update, a committee that wants, and um I wanted to test these around, let you look at the symbol of the logo the other way. So um the end goal, um first, it was led by the athletic director, Chris Farrell. Um, the end goal is to have a consistent image among our athletic programs and departments, including logos, colors, and typography. Um, as a committee, we reviewed past images and hand yearbooks across the years and across sports. And noted the lack of consistent images and typography even within sports. There were different tiger and pot images as well as different colors and fonts. The color issues were discussed, so um you may have noticed that the hand football team um has always had a different colored helmet due to the color variety that's available. Um, that's why the old jerseys were a different color gold than the helmets. Um, the helmets only came in what is known as Team Vegas Gold. Um, and the old jerseys matched the predominant gold used at Hand, which is called Steel Town Gold or University Gold. Um, Hand Gymnastics also has a limitation because they can only get Team uh Vegas Gold on their uniforms. So the color that was most used as Hand's color across the years for gold and was most identified as Hand's gold color is known as Steel Town Gold. Under the Under Armour views online, and it's also known as University Gold. And the committee agreed with the athletic director to go forward with this color, so it does pose um slight problem with the football helmet and the gymnastics team. So the use of gold on those two teams, um because they have limited availability. We're going to still maintain the unifying look of the athletic program, but we're going to minimize the use of gold, so you um. For for instance, on the leotards of the gymnastics, there's only a small amount of gold, so you don't really notice. It's not like a a large, you know, bold stripe. And then um for the uh football athletic uniforms, we might like outline letters or numbers in gold, so it doesn't really stand out that it's different. The hand football helmets um are inspected and reconditioned, including painting every year. So if ultimately we decide to change the helmet color, it won't be an issue with timing or expense because it's done every year and it's built into the budget. Um, cheerleading changed their colors to match Hand Football, and so they use Team Vegas Gold. So when we decide to change everyone over to the University or Steel Town Gold, they will also change to match so that everything is unified. Um, and uh Chris uh Farrell is going to put together a color chart with hex numbers. And it's going to be for our school colors and then be used for everyone's uniforms, team gear, and fan gear. Through yearbooks and discussion, it's clear that our school colors are black and gold, with the gold being University Gold or Steel Town Gold. So then the committee discussed um typography and supported the use of one font across sports. And if you look at it, if you come back through, it's undeniable is what we um chose. It's a fan favorite. Uh, people are always commenting, uh TJ wears a a jury uh. A pullover and it's got the lettering on it, and that's a lettering that everyone really seems to like and comment on. Um, and across the board, when you look at it, when it has been used on uniforms, it has a nice, clean, bold, professional look. Um, and it's easy to read. Um, but the AD will send out three to four font options so that everyone can share their opinions and will come to a common agreement. As far as the logo changes to the paw print and tiger images, the committee agreed that we all want to keep a paw logo and a tiger logo. And they want a tiger that looks fierce, and so the one that they most, everyone most identified with would be. The one that will be very, very similar to Tolson. Um, and so we um thought that it would be a great idea to get students involved. Um, and so Chris is going to speak with the digital art teachers and explain what we're looking for. We want two to three students who can be creative with digital art. Use the paw logo and the side tiger fierce logo to digitally enhance and change them. To make it original to Madison and reduce copyright and trademark issues. Once the logos and colors and fonts are agreed upon, a preliminary media branding guide will be put together for the committee to review at a future meeting date in time. This will then be shared with the head coaches via a meeting to gain their insights and thoughts. And when there is agreement, a final branding media guide will be created and shared, and one of the things that Chris said is we can. Will have um one site where everyone can order from so that everyone has the same look, the same font, the same colors, the same logo. And um it'll be a nice unifying look across the board for all athletics. And also, the more that we order from the one place, the cheaper everything becomes, and so we'll end up saving money on uniforms, et cetera. And so currently, there are fifteen committee members, and they include uh Hand Principal Mr. Salutary. Um, the AD, Chris Farrell, the Executive Secretary for the Athletic Department, Robin Callahan. Uh, the athletic trainer, Terry Ajaski, the health teacher, Brian Gowan.
Good.
Good. A social studies teacher, and also the girls varsity field hockey coach, Sue Lucky. The cheerleading coach, Michelle O'Day, the boys varsity soccer coach, Mike Shirley, and the girls varsity soccer coach. Rob McConville, myself, and other members of the community. And so um you, I wanted a chance to see the fonts and the, but that's what we're working on, and it seems we're all pretty much in agreement. It went really quickly. I think we're going to be able to, you know, get this going pretty quickly so that there's no delay in time.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to point out quickly that um, you know, a- as you know, um as a district, we were. Denied our uh reading waiver request from the Right to Read statute. And um we have been advocating vociferously uh through and with uh CADE. Connecticut um Association of Boards of Education and also um ourselves uh individually, and I um. Was able to connect with some of the board chairs of some of the other boards whose um. Homegrown curriculum waivers were declined. We'll be reaching out to them and working in partnership with them as well. Um, a good number of you are signed up. Thank you for the uh legis- the CADE legislative. legislative breakfast on Thursday morning. Where uh we're going to have a not only a great turnout as these go, it's the largest in a long time. We expect to have forty uh board members and superintendents there. Um, but there's also going to be uh seven legislators who are signed up so far, and that's a, that's uh one of the largest showings. Um, and I think we'll we'll be able to have a strong advocacy impact at that. Um, there is a. Um, CADE um event tomorrow morning from eleven to twelve fifteen online. Um, about uh the importance of advocacy, interestingly enough. So if anybody wants to sign up for that last minute, you can do that. You probably received it in your uh invitation in your emails. Um, and again, it's online, so you could just attend it quickly. Um, and uh that's all I wanted to say for now. Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
So if we wanted to um like make any comments about like the budget that's proposed, not necessarily at the time of the motion. If you do it now.
Do you want to make any comments about the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I typically, you know, we'll hit, there will be discussion, general discussion about the budget. Um, because this is for for um. The item is for uh the action item is uh. For discussion and potential action. Oh, no, that changed. Well, it's motioned, but we will have, the way it's typically handled is during discussion on the budget. Uh, motion, uh people get to comment to their, to the extent they like uh board members, and then. Um, if anybody feels they need to raise a motion, um then they are free to do that.
So just under superintendent's report, there's proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget discussion.
I think it was just introducing the fact that we're discussing that today. Uh, but usually our board discussion.
All right, then I'll make board member comments. So my one comment um would be. And I'm shocking you all, I'm sure that I have nothing stayed bad or that I don't want to have a reading interventionist or the social with this. I think I I really appreciated the information that I got on that. It was nice to see the numbers of, you know, it's not like we have excessive numbers of them, and. Um, it's really just one social worker per school, and I think that is fair, um and they certainly have a lot of work to do. Um, I did note that it seems like, you know, the vast majority of the work being done, or so it seemed, um has to deal with special education, which is typical. Um, I did want to say that um I I was a little sad to see that there is not, there are not more teachers that are um. Important when going to have certified, and it it's, you know, we support that program and it's such a great um tool that. It would be really great if like all the teachers were certified in that, and I, you know, I don't know. Obviously, that costs money, but if that is the evidence-based way to teach, then it shouldn't be just um reserved for. Those who struggle should be, everyone should get that teaching. And so it would be, I think, a great thing for our district if we could have more teachers certified in that so that everyone benefits equally from it. And then um I did have a question for Dr. Cook. I had asked you um a question about um. That one line under emergency maintenance, and was that a typo?
So um you were talking about the year-to-date spend.
It was a twenty-twenty-three actual of only five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, and it was, you know, budgeted for fifty thousand, but, you know. I had been told that we had actually spent it all because we had like group these, et cetera, but why does it only look like six thousand was spent of the fifty thousand?
Oh, call it sixty thousand.
Yeah, so I don't have the back the background, and I could maybe pull it up in a in a minute or so. But my guess would be we line item transferred out of that account into another account, and that column will show what was actually expended.
It just didn't make sense to me, you know, like when we knew that we had spent it on actual repairs that were emergency.
Yeah.
Why it would only say we spent six thousand, so I figured something had to be funky there.
Yeah, that's actual expenditures. If we line item transferred out to a maintenance line item, it wouldn't show in that column.
All right. That weird accounting stuff that you do. Those are my only problems, though.
Thank you. All right, um, any other board member comments? Once, go twice, and um. Next agenda item, audience response to information presented. Is the audience hand up online?
No.
Okay. Everybody in here in the audience, so move on. Uh, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, I. I'll oppose, nay. Extentions. Nay. Did, I'm sorry. Uh, Christine, did you vote in favor against?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I don't, I didn't raise my hand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Mary Ann on, yes.
Mary Ann's right there.
Oh, okay, thanks. She's there, yes. All right, so we have a full side of. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is board committee and liaison updates. Uh, first up is curriculum and student development. Yes, the last time we met. Was December nineteenth. That meeting, uh, Mary Ann Connolly, Kathy Miller, and myself are present, as well as Seth. Classic and Gail, Dolling Hinch, and Dr. Cook. The presentation was on college and career. School links. The presenters are Chrissy Coyle and Jen Hallink. Uh, the presentation was for information purposes, I'm not seeking board approval. The presentation focused on the shift from the Naviance platform. To that of the School Links platform and updates on the progression of the college and career plans that Dana and I stole. Continuing initiatives have been in the area of developing community partnerships. And opportunities for mentors and internships for high school students. Currently, there are sixty volunteers to support these programs. And potential mentors are being vetted. A goal is to expand the industry partner network and match students with mentors in the students' area of interest. They're currently pilot programs of students in the areas of architecture, social media, marketing, and education. The shift from Naviance to School Links is based upon um the difficulty they found. In utilizing Naviance and the reality that students were not using it beyond a very superficial level. Student input on introduction to School Links found it more current, user-friendly. And provided an extensive array of services and was fully supported by the provider and responsive to requests. And queries. School Links does provide interest inventories and college application support as well as. Support for student portfolios. There were numerous questions from committee members and support for this change. And the general direction the college and career program is progressing. There was not public comment, and the meeting adjourned at five thirty. End of report. Thank you. Steve, any questions? No, okay, thank you. Moving on to facilities committee, Ellen.
Uh, we've not met since our last meeting. We will see an update for the February thirteenth meeting. We're going to be meeting at Brown. For a tour and our facilities meeting will begin at four thirty, especially in Congress. Nothing to report.
Thank you for the questions. No, okay, finance committee, Galen. We also have not met. Um, our next meeting is February twenty-seventh at five thirty. Questions? Thank you. Personnel committee, Marie.
We also haven't, so we don't have a, we don't have a need for a future meeting.
Okay, thank you for the question. No, all right, uh, policy committee, Diane.
Uh, we met tonight via Zoom. Um, we discussed. Um, several policies for recission, several policies for rescinding replace. It was a very quick meeting. It was great to see you at your next meeting. And we have policies for a first read tonight, ninety-eight hundred school board member services, ninety-eight ten new board member orientation handbook. Ninety-eight twenty board member development opportunities, that's a first read. Also ninety-eight thirty board facilities and services. Those are in your packet for first read tonight. We also have a policy for reviewers at first read, fifty-nine, eighty-point four, point two, point one, point one regions. We have um a bunch of action items for tonight. Policy for recission with a wave of the second reading, if you so choose. Fifty-one hundred point five student fundraising activities, fifty-one twenty point one student insurance coverage. Fifty-one twenty point two reports of accidents, fifty-one fifty employment, fifty-one sixty gifts to employees. Just want to make a note about um policy fifty-one sixty. Um, although it is set for a recession, um we are going to look at this policy. Um, and moving a similar one into the four thousand series to be discussed at a future policy committee meeting. Um, because we did want to keep something in the policy, but it would not be in the five thousand series, which is a student series. It would move it to the four thousand series after personnel, so that will be forthcoming, but it is on your um agenda as an action item to rescind fifty-one sixty gifts to employees. We also have a second read for policies for recession. Ninety-five forty point one one news media service at meetings, ninety-nine hundred school board legislative program, ninety-nine ten state legislative.
Ninety nine ten state legislative program, fifty one twenty point nine point four bicycle and roller blade use. And this was discussed. At length during um during a committee meeting, just to to go through the different schools and who was really still utilizing um roller blades and bicycles. Um and whether or not um it was a a relevant uh policy. Turns out it's not, so that's why it's on your agenda for recision. And we also have policy fifty one twenty point four point two point three substance abuse counseling. We have policies for review, which is a rescinded place for a second read tonight, also action items, ninety five ten time, place, and notice of meetings. Which replaces the ninety five ten regular board meetings, ninety five twenty special board meetings, ninety five forty point one notification of board meetings. Then we also have policy fifty ninety point eight point one search and seizure and its associated regulation, which we did discuss at length um during the policy committee meeting. Um due to the wording regarding the search of a student's person. Um and and the wording of that, we went back to um shipment and goodwin and use the language that they recommended. Um and if you wanna discuss that further, we can discuss it when it comes to action item. Um or I'm happy to answer your question now if you wish. Um and then there's fifty ninety point three point one student dress and fifty one forty four point four physical activity under compliance student discipline. Your shipment and goodwin notes are included in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, as a note, any of the nine thousand series require a chief or ex vote to pass.
Questions? Thank you. Questions?
And your report.
Thank you. Uh learn liaison, Mary Ann.
Hi, yes, we met um last Thursday, January eleventh. Um most of the meeting was uh. Was about the new people who are on the board who got elected and they talked about. Exactly what learn was about and the rest and all the different school districts and uh. It was interesting. I actually learned more each time I go and learn more about learn and realize what a what an asset it is to our district. And how we, you know, the superintendents can use it, we can use it. Um I also at the end asked about the reading. And I spoke with Craig afterwards and uh most of them had not gotten their reading waivers either. So they were all kind of up in arms. I kinda started a thing at the end, but we did discuss that and I guess everyone's trying to get their waivers.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions? Uh okay. Thank you very much, everybody, for your good reports. Um next action item, action item ten. This is gonna be um, this is gonna result in a motion to approve. The proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, um which is currently at sixty three thousand, uh sixty three million, yeah. Sixty three million, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred seventy four dollars, which represents a three point four four percent. Total increase over last year's budget. So in order to discuss this, I need a motion. And it'll be a motion to approve the proposed budget of twenty twenty four, the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Uh in the amount of sixty three million, nine hundred thousand, eight hundred seventy four dollars, which represents a three point four four percent increase in spending. Do I have a motion? That's from Emily. Thank you. Do I have a second? It's not a second. Second for Galen. Alright, so um. Because we have a motion and a second, that opens up discussion. I would like to start the discussion um by um. Discussing a couple of things. First of all, in general, I know, you know, we'll discuss the budget in in more detail, but in general. I wanna thank and congratulate uh both the finance committee and the administration um for all of our work you did, including Stacy. Thank you. Um you know, it's never easy to do a budget. I know that you take a real start from the ground and and. Look at what you need viewpoint rather than, hey, let's just roll it over and add some money to it. And that's greatly appreciated that you take a fresh look every year and and only ask for what you need. Um I think by and large, the board greatly appreciates the the result. Um this year, and I I think you'll hear that through discussion. Um I did wanna mention that. Through discussions that are, um we have a tri-chairs meeting, um where uh the um first select woman. The chair of the board of finance, myself, Stacy, Bill, Craig, um are are all in attendance. And we kinda discussed what's coming down the bike and we used it as an opportunity and we usually use it every budget season. To discuss what the main budget drivers are, what the main cost drivers are in our respective budgets to kind of. Keep in touch and start um the ball rolling. Um and we were able to um express to um Peggy and John as a result. Some of the um annual uh and and especially this year, some of the unique and one-time cost drivers. That are driving this year's budget. Um and through that discussion, there seemed to be a general appetite uh expressed. Um by the um first select woman and chair of the board of finance to consider that. Um maybe a a good way to handle some of those one-time expenses. Uh might be to handle them off budget and to instead do appropriations for them. The advantage to that, not only uh obviously in having the impact of reducing our budget. Uh but in a way that we probably would agree is uh would be welcome uh if that were to happen. Uh but um it would also uh benefit the town and the taxpayer by having the impact of um. Taking that money off the budget so it doesn't increase our budget basis going forward. And what that means is by taking it out, taking it out of the budget and treating it as a one-time expense as it truly is. It doesn't fatten up our budget this year so that when we do a percent increase next year, it's based on a bigger budget to begin with. So it's a bigger number, uh you know, based on the percentage increase. So it it, you know. I'm not sure it'll happen. It's gonna require um a little bit of patience and it's gonna require that uh the two other boards. Um vote to support that concept. Um so I would strongly recommend in the meantime that we proceed. On the basis um and on the assumption that um that's not going to happen. Until we get news down the bike later, that that may end up being what what uh those boards vote to do. Um we're in the unenviable position of having to vote for our budget first and then wait to see how it's handled by other boards. And because of that, I think we, you know, my, I contend that the smartest thing to do is to vote for our budget. In whatever final form we put forward tonight um and keep in those one-time costs for now. Um and allow the other boards to do their thing uh when they receive our budget. Does anyone have any questions about that? No? Okay. Mary, do you have a question, Mary Ann? Thank you.
I would unmute.
You're on mute.
So what would you like consider a one-time? Would that be like the marching band uniform? Like what would be considered a one-time?
Anything that's in our budget um because it was foisted on us this year or it's needed this year. And it tends to be one-time or cyclical, and this is the year it came up. Um so that would include, for example, the band uniforms. Uh it would include some furnishings that are needed for um for, I'm sorry.
The bridge furniture at hand.
Yeah, the bridge furniture at hand, some furnishings for the new uh for the new uh wing in in Brown and that sort of thing. So. Um you know, there's there's certain items. It also includes technically, because we were denied the the reading waiver by the state. Department of Education, um we're putting in a one-time request for something over a hundred thousand dollars. Um to help start us down the road of complying with the statute uh that needs to be complied with. Uh as of now, um it needs to be complied with by July of twenty twenty five. Um so we've positioned ourselves to take it, you know, in chunks over the next couple of years. But these are unique expenditures that um are not carried over budget to budget.
So if we vote on them now and they're in the budget, how can we, can we be reimbursed? Or how does that work with the town?
The way it work is um obviously our budget, after we vote on it, it goes to the board of selectmen. They have recommendatory oversight, which means they'll review our budget and um they don't have the right to make cuts to it. But they do have the right to comment on where they think cuts could or should be made. Um and then they pass it along to the board of finance, along with that public commentary that they made. The board of finance then gets it and they have actual uh authority to uh reduce our budget. Um what I am hoping occurs is that they take into account these one-time expenses. And during their deliberations, both on the board of selectmen and in their recommendatory, the recommendatory role passing along to the board of finance. I'm hoping they have public discussions um addressing these one-time costs. And recognizing that it would be better for the town to handle those as appropriations and off our budget. Um that has obvious advantages to helping our budget progress, but at the same time, it has an overall positive impact. On the town and for the taxpayer um by, like I said, reducing the basis of our budget going forward. Um if they do that, then I would imagine the way it would work is the board of finance uh would then vote. They're not allowed to lot to vote for line items on on our budget. They're only allowed to vote a dollar amount. So they'll deliberate as to what dollar amount they feel, for example, might represent some of these one-time expenses. And they may decide to discuss on the record, which would make us feel more comfortable, that they would be willing to maybe appropriate. For some of those down the road. And then I would imagine they would take a vote to reduce our budget. Um by some amount that uh they discuss, they would probably um. Plan on appropriating for going forward. That's the process for it. Because we don't have assurances now. It's important that, to to my mind, it's important because we do need these funds and that's very clear. Um it's important that we vote to include those in our proposed budget. Um but if we get a reduced budget back from the board of finance, um along with a concomitant discussion point. That they're willing to consider appropriating uh to to restore some of that. Um so that we get what we need, but it's off our budget, um then that's how that would work and. To an appropriation down the road. Christine?
Yeah, thank you. Um could you then treat them as a capital improvement as opposed to. Including it in our on our budget? So if the town does something like that, it's a bonded effect as opposed.
No, it wouldn't pass through bonding. It would just be a special appropriation that the board of selectmen and the board of finance would have to vote on.
But then who pays, who pays for?
So in the, I, in the past, um you know, if we we received good news on some item. Um I could write a letter on behalf of the board to the board of finance to say. Because this happened, we feel you can make this reduction. So kind of basically giving them that um signal that it's a, it's fair to do it. They don't have. The obligation to do it, but most likely they would, they would take that action, reduce our budget by a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred fifty thousand dollars based on that. So. Um you know, I think what what Seth is saying at that point, what will be farther down the road with our discussions, it would be a one-time. Um expenditure, you know, from the general fund for, say, purchase of band uniforms, because that was discussed. If that's what the board decided to to do, but uh we, those this, those discussions have not really progressed to that, that point of Seth's share. Uh that we're, you know, we're we're sure they're gonna happen.
Yeah, it's, it was, just a distinction. I don't know if it would be the general fund or uh it could be a, you know, uh designated. Uh undesigned funded.
Right, exactly.
I know that there's some excess there uh to be had. So any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Okay, that being discussed, and I think that's a good context for us to jump into this uh deeper discussion. Um I'll open the floor to anybody who wants to discuss any aspects of the current budget assets. Diane?
Um so there's actually two things that I wanted to discuss and um I will do it in the opposite order of importance to you. Um so the one thing that I wanted to talk about were the band uniforms. And um and it's not that I don't think that the band uh. Needs new uniforms or deserves new uniforms, but when you compare. Band uniforms to sports uniforms, they don't get quite the same use. So they do last longer. Um and with the current numbers, I'm seeing there are seventy nine band members enrolled right now. We have two hundred and twenty five uniforms. That's almost three uniforms per student. And I get you gotta have different sizes for different peoples. Um but that's a a lot of uniforms for that many students. And I know, you know, they're not in um perfect. Uh repair, but um from what I have heard, they're not horrible either. I have seen them. But one of the things that I would um ask you to consider is that. While we're doing the logo and font and color changes, if you look at the current band uniforms. Um they do have a font on their right sleeve that says Daniel Hand. And the color of the gold actually matches the um the gold of the football, not of the gold that we're gonna go forward with. So um and they also have the paw logo on the left breast. So those three things, the color, the logo, and the font, um you know, going forward. If we keep band uniforms much longer than we keep sports uniforms. So I would definitely want us to not order new ones until we have the new logo and font and coloring settled. Um and I'm, don't know when that's going to happen, but it, I don't think it's gonna take that long. And I understand this is for. You know, the next year, there's a delay in ordering, but I just wanted to put that out there, that it's a good reason to consider delaying it. Um or um and also the fact that they have many uniforms and not as many students as in the past. And so if we did want to reduce the budget or felt the need. Or a fiscal responsibility to reduce the budget, that this might be one of the items that we could do it on. That's my first item. My second item would of course be the AP. So we know what we spent. Like around six thousand, seven thousand dollars um in the trial year. We have no idea what we're gonna be spending this spring, but it's a lot of fifteen thousand. And they ask us for double that. So I would say no to that. I think that if uh. One of the few places that we could actually make a cut, although not significant. Still, it's an effort to be fiscally responsible and say, well, if we didn't use all of the money we allotted the first year. And we don't know if we'll use the poem now. I don't see the need to double it. So I would say that I would like to reduce. The proposed budget by the fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. That's over fifteen thousand, a lot for the uh. For that.
Yeah, on the uniforms, I would just point out in response that um the uniform. The the cost for the uniforms as aligned in this budget uh for the band uniforms. Is projected to not be funded until the next fiscal year, which is after July, July first or after. So I think based on your report, the logo um re, yeah, the logo committee will come up with, yeah. So I don't think that will, that's a well-taken point. Um I would hate to have. That big investment put into uniforms that the second they come out, they're mismatched to the rest of our logos and and all of that and. Um absolutely agree. Uh you know, they're, the band uniforms are generally put on a ten-year um cycle. Not only because of the wear and, you know, they might be able to march on their own by now. Um but um also because, like everything else, you know, they start to get. Aged out in terms of style and, you know, competitive use and and all of that.
They want the bell bottom hip huggers style?
We don't want that bell bottom hip huggers, no, although they may be back in soon. So I, you know, your point's well taken there and I'm, you know, more than happy to take further discussion on that. Um and then um, you know, I also, I also take your point on the um. It really the superintendent's pilot program um on AP test prep. I think so far it shows great signs right out of the gate. In the first year we tried it, there was interest. And there probably were some students who would tell you that they felt they did better.
No, absolutely. Yeah, I think it's a great program and I fully support it.
Yeah.
But there needs to be like. But there needs to be like, you know, proof of support.
Well, and, and that's the point that I wanted to make is that I, you know, I do see that. You know, we didn't use up to the, the initial fifteen thousand allotment. And you know, there is, there are indications, and I would like Craig to have an opportunity to discuss it as well. Uh, there are indications that because that was the first year and there, it will pick up steam and we may use up to thirty thousand next year, but.
Yeah.
At the same time, I'm sensitive to your, you know, your discussion point that. It is fiscally responsible to look at performance so far and maybe inch it up and maybe go for thirty thousand in the next budget cycle, not this coming budget cycle.
I mean, I certainly think we, you know, take a look at what happens to spring. And I, I do know that there are, there are factors that you couldn't possibly foresee, you know. I know for instance, on one of the weekends that the AP um, offer, the help was offered, that there were some major athletic. Things going on that weekend, and so they, even if the students wanted to participate, they already had um, responsibilities for their athletic teams. And you know, next year that might not be the case, right? I mean, it's highly dependent on.
Can I ask a question about all this?
Yeah, hang on one second, one, one second. I'm calling you next, sorry.
Um, so, so I think, you know, there is the chance that more students will utilize it. If it just happens to align better with their schedules. And that being said, we know how busy our juniors are. They're already over scheduled with their lives. Um, and so they, they will continue to have multiple responsibilities that might interfere, you know. Depending on what they prioritize, um, they, you know, are gonna be going to an athletic event or if they're going to be going to the AP review session.
Yeah. Thank you, Mary. Uh, thank you, Diane. Mary Anne, did you wanna?
Yeah, I think, I think part of my issue with, with all this is, well, two things. I, I know what Diane's talking about. I'd like to know, you know how other uh, clubs and. Things that the children do have booster. Do we have a booster club that has anything to do with the marching band or? Is there any fundraising? Do they fundraise?
They do. So there's the um, Daniel Hand Booster, uh, Music Booster Club, and they support um, marching band and orchestra. And regular jazz band, um, and they do fundraise. So the concession stand at the football games is the music boosters. Um, and they use that money, for instance, they bought the polo shirts for the band. They also paid for um, the senior sign for the band members and they've um. Offered to do the same for orchestra students, seniors this year. Um, they're leaving it up to the um, orchestra. Uh, teacher and students to decide, you know, if they, what they want to do with that um, equivalent money or somewhat equivalent money. Um, and they do fundraisers all year long. They do the pot pie fundraiser, they do the mattress fundraiser.
That's for the whole music. That's like vibe, that's for the whole group.
No, so vibe is not included in the music boosters. Vibe is a separate. They have their own.
They do the pot pie. Oh, so that's a different part of the music, I see.
Yes, vibe is separate from the music boosters.
And, and the other thing I wanted to ask, as far as the AP goes, I have some confusion as to exactly what. Is done with, in other words, what is the preparation? Are the teachers, how is this, what is it? For, to me, I really don't know.
It's a good opportunity for Craig to.
Yeah, that's what I'd like.
Sure, so if I can, I'm on both things. I'll, I'll, I'll start with AP. So, um, AP is just a, it's a more of a tutoring session. For students. So our teachers are very familiar, um, what's gonna be on the test. And so. Um, it's based on the curriculum that they, they teach all year, but. And, and so these are basically small groups with students. It could be, some of them are, are bigger where they are kind of. You know, going over the material again, kind of highlighting what they, um, you know, what they might have not got to. So remember, um. Across, uh, across the nation, everybody takes the AP test at the same time. So Florida students that start in early August have a. Pretty big advantage over Connecticut students. Then you layer on top of that, some of our AP classes end in March and the students aren't taking the test till May. Um, our students do very well on the AP, but I think that we loo- do leave, you know, some uh. Some points on the table by not giving them the full advantage. So. This kind of gets them, you know, up to speed, kind of reviews materials that might, they might have had in September. Um, there is materials that they don't get to, so they don't get to all the curriculum because of that timeframe, because they're taking the test in potentially early May. You know, and we still have a, a month and a half left to school. So that allows them to, um, you know, kind of increase their, their access to the materials, review it. Um, and again, as I said last meeting, um, you know, student getting a four instead of a three might be the difference of three credits, you know, on their transcript. So that's a three thousand dollar benefit. So for a fifteen thousand dollar spender or thirty thousand dollar spend, there's pretty good return on the investment for families in Madison.
Right, so that money goes to, to the teachers who take extra time.
Yeah, right. So thank you. Yeah, so it goes pretty far. It's, you know, it's, it's forty-four dollars an hour rate. They get some preparation time because they have to prepare for that, but then the, the, the time that they're in front of students. So, um, it goes, goes pretty far.
It's like a, it's, it's on a weekend or it's on a day.
Yes, so they try and schedule what students would be available. Could be, you know, nights, weekends, as Diane shared. Our students are so. Busy, especially you start getting to, you know, March, April timeframe, um, you know, juniors, seniors, they're, 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 they're very busy. So it is hard to fit that in, but um, they're finding, you know, some success in that. So I think that. Um, and I agree, I, you know, I, I see that last year was a, um, I think we could spend a whole, whole amount or more than fifteen thousand, but. We haven't yet. And so I, I think the high school and, and myself are comfortable if, if we're not able to expand the money this year, that we continue to push. And we think that it will expand in students' minds and, and uh, teachers' minds and we'll offer more. And, you know, we'll, we'll see where this.
How do they sign up? Like, how do you sign up? Like?
Teachers, well, the, the teachers contact the students directly. So it might be an email that they email the teacher back that they're planning on attending. Uh, you know, and so they're, so they're, they're signing up directly with the, with the teacher.
It's really dependent upon, um, you know, the number of students that sign up to take the specific AP courses. And not every student that takes the AP course is going to sit for the AP exam. And it also is very dependent upon the teacher's availability as well. I know that they were offering some classes after school, some were on the weekends. And, and sometimes they offered um, both and we'll see how many students were able to make it to which session, you know?
Yeah. And in terms of uh, band uniforms, I would strongly advocate we treat, we treat our, our band um, students. The same way we treat all of our athletes. You know, I, I think that um, to ask them to fundraise or to ask them to. Wait longer than a, a normal cycle, I think is, is difficult. And then I just did some quick math. I thought this was fun for me, I don't know. When you think about the band uniforms, so if they have six events, you know, from very hot to very cold. But um, and also, you know, they do have parades, they do have, you know, playoff games as well. They're getting, you know, say eight uses a, a, a year on a, on the low end. But a, a whole basketball uniform gets ten uses. Their replacement cycle is four to five years. This replacement cycle is ten years. So this might be worn by ten students. For a total of eighty, you know, or more times. And so I do think it actually gets more use. I didn't think of that before, but I just.
Well, but I think the terror is different. I mean, they're marching in them. They're not sliding into home base. They're not getting tackled in them. They're not.
In the rain.
They're throwing every instrument, they're sweating in them.
Sliding in the mud.
I think it'd be a good point about the colors and that would just be something to share with whoever's ordering them. Be sure you don't sign off on our gold or the paw print. And I think a lot of times with costumes, I had a lot of dancers. Um, that's about the last thing they do is put on the applique or the screaming print or something like that. So they probably could. Get started on the costumes.
Think they're gonna do that.
Yeah, but even that is like the last step.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say that we're not gonna um, put any order in until we know that's a, as I shared, it's, you know, ninety to a hundred eighty days. So probably a hundred eighty days, everything seems to be on that long cycle of any order. So we don't anticipate that our students would even have them for this fall. You know, probably have for the spring, um, you know, if they're doing, if they're afraid that would be when we roll over.
I, I will also add, um, and then I want to open it up if anyone else has any other discussion points that they want to bring up. Um, I was on a board, the K board chairs uh, meeting just yesterday. And it appears that uh, someone informed us that according to. The um, CAPS superintendent's uh, K, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's. Um, the average increase in budget this year is four point nine eight percent, almost five percent. Um, and I'm hearing from Craig, if you will, let me know what he told me today.
Yeah, and I think in, in our area and certainly our, our comparable districts, A and B, it's, it's higher than that. I'm hearing eights, nines, um. You know, some pretty high numbers I had not seen before. Um, I heard an eighteen that, or, you know, uh, Dan Barry, um. You know, so there's, there's some high numbers out there. I think there's, I think insurance is a big one, you know, again, compliment to Stacy, Heather, uh, Personnel Committee and. All the work we've done and our contracts with insurance, um, you know, our employees. Um, so I think that's a, that's a huge one, you know, although that's a big number that we have in insurance, it could be double that, um, that people are seeing that. Um, also not leaving ourselves with a huge clip for the Esserfuns, I think is a, a big piece, you know, they're. Seeing districts with high budgets also laying off of hard part of their employees. So, uh, we're not, either of those positions, so appreciate them.
Well, like, we try harder.
I just have two, two comments.
Go ahead, go ahead, Christine.
Thank you, thank you. One, I fully support the band uniforms. I, I, and I love that Craig did the math. And I fully am in support of new uniforms. And two, I'm in full support of the AP funding. Um, I did reach out to two other districts that I know people that are on boards and they don't fund for AP. You know, extra help. And I think it just speaks volumes that Madison is. Funding a program and we may not have spent it all, but we will at some point to help our kids and to increase. You know, their knowledge and to, and to help them in colleges and get that four or their five. So that we can just, you know, rankings and, and et cetera.
Thank you. And was there a second thing you wanted to?
No, no, that's it.
informs it. Oh, that was, yeah, that was two, sorry.
That was two.
Um, if I only counted it as one and a half for some reason. All right. Any other discussion points? Anybody want to add anything? What else? All right, I will entertain any motions if anyone is interested.
I actually have a question how to do this.
Sure.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the proposed budget. So then, if I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed budget to reduce it by the AP fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen. Is that how I would do it?
Yeah, you would do, you would do a motion to amend from the floor. It would require a second. If somebody seconded. If, if somebody were to second it, then we would have discussion on the amendment and vote on the amendment.
But the, the motion on the floor is to approve the proposed budget.
You would, yeah. Well, it's, it's to approve the budget as proposed. So you would do an amendment. You would move an amendment to reduce that proposed budget and we would vote on that amendment. If that amendment passes.
Then we would.
Then we would vote on the reduced version as amended.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. To reduce it by fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. So that the new budget amount would be, I don't have to say that. That is my term of motion. Thank you.
Oh, that's it. I'll second that. All right, we have a second. All right, so that is motion by Diane. Second by Caitlin. All right, so now I will open up discussion uh, to the floor on Diane's motion. To amend the proposed budget to reduce it by fifteen thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. Um, which is the increased funding that's proposed for the AP test preparation program.
It still keeps in the fifteen thousand that we budgeted last year.
Correct.
And that we have to spend uh, this spring. So it's not reducing um, what we have. It's just that it wasn't all spent before.
It's basically flat funding the program through.
To keep it what it was and not increase it. And I just would like to make a point about the AP is that. You know, one of the reasons this is so important for Madison is because we're one of the few schools that has a trimester system. Where we have AP classes where you could possibly be taking them first and second trimester and have an entire trimester. Where you don't even touch the subject, but be expected to sit for the May AP exam. And that's why it's important to have it. But I don't think it's important to overfund it just yet. Um, and I think when you look at other schools, they're on a semester system. And they get to study the topic through the whole time, and so they stay current on it. And it might be, they might do review in class. It's not separately budgeted for. Um, I'm pretty sure that's what Gilford does. Um, and so that's why it's more important for us to have. The AP help because of the trimester system that's unique to us.
Any other um, commentary on that motion? Who else?
If there's, if there's no discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
By law, you have to now by a meeting.
Yes, I thought so. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. If, if one member calls for a roll call vote, then we call each member's name and they vote a, nay or abstention. Um, and uh, we take that down for the record. What's that? Um, yeah, well, I mean, in effect, you know, we announce who voted a, nay and, and abstention in um. In our uh, minutes anyway, so it's not necessary, but um, a member called for it and I am inclined to. Go ahead and uh, and uh, do it that way. So any last discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll start at this end of the table and then um, go around the table and then go to the folks on Zoom. Uh, Stephen, how do you vote? Yeah, and I'm, just to make sure everyone's clear, this is on the amend, motion to amend to reduce it by fifteen thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. Uh, the proposed budget. Okay, I'm sorry, Stephen?
Yay.
Yay. Uh, yeah, let's go with Caitlin. Hey. Seth, I'll vote yay. Um, Elka, Emily, I'm sorry, what was that?
Yes.
Yay. Thank you. Uh, Kathy.
Yay.
Diane, yay, not surprisingly. Yeah.
Green, yay.
And then uh, Mary Anne?
Nay.
Nay, okay. And Christine?
No.
Nay, okay. The ayes have it, so it is um, seven to two in favor of the amendment to reduce the budget by fifteen thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. Um, which represents the uh, additional funding for the AP test preparation line. Uh, so that by my calculation would change the, the standing motion. To approve the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget as amended. Um, in the amount of sixty-three million eight hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Uh, which is approximately a three point four percent increase in spending.
Three point four one.
Three point four one, thank you.
Shining on a spot over there.
Are you gonna do it? Somebody could be helpful there. Okay, so now, unless there's another motion on the floor that comes up. The original motion, uh, the standing motion is uh, amended to approve the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five budget in the amount of sixty-three million eight hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred fifty-six. Uh, had a uh, approximate three point four one percent increase in spending. And um, unless there's any further discussion. Further discussion. Further discussion. Hearing none.
I don't, I'm sorry. I just, I said, thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Patrick. It's a great buddy. Thank you. Agreed. Thank you all. All right.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Um, that it's actually a very mean budget and um. You know, funding anything that's reasonable, but that was very difficult. So I thank the administration for their hard work. So I'm telling you, she tried. And um, I thought it was a good question by Christine about how much was actually contractual obligation. And that was two point six eight percent. So that's like a, a vast majority of. And that was two point six eight percent. So that's like a, a vast majority of it. So I mean, if you're talking a, you said three point four one. Four one increase, minus the two point six eight, that's hardly.
And the health insurance increases eight point four four percent.
So I think that it's, yeah, reasonable and, um. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call a question. Remember, this motion was, uh, was moved by Emily, seconded by Galen. All in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Any abstentions?
Did you get that?
Yes, I got one opposed. Mary Ann, I didn't see your vote, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, is that four against or abstinent?
Like against.
Against, okay.
But this, this isn't for the budget though, right?
Yes, the vote is, uh, seven, four, two, against.
For the budget itself, the whole?
For the, for the whole Board of Ed budget that we're proposing next to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and then further consideration onto the Board of Finance. There will be a presentation, February fourteenth, I believe. Yeah, on this, to the Board of Selectmen. Right? Uh, thank you all. Um, so next action item is a motion to approve the addition of paper towels at Daniel Hand High School. For the remainder of the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Emily, do I have a second?
Second.
By Diane?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on whether or not to fund paper towels at Daniel Hand High School? For the remainder of this school year?
So I think it's not really a, a matter of funding or not. Funding was never removed, the. The addition or subtraction of paper towels was never voted on by the board. The funding was never removed by a vote by the board. It was decision of the Facilities Committee level. And so, um, it was also a decision at the Facility Committee level. To bring a state paper towels at hand. So it's really sort of, in my feeling, an inappropriate vote. At the board level, because we don't discuss whether or not we want to have single ply or double ply toilet paper at this level either. That's not what boards do.
Yeah, I, to that, I would agree wholeheartedly that this gets down in the weeds. Where we don't want to be as a board of nine in terms of ma, you know, micromanaging. Uh, this normally occurs at the subcommittee level and in this case at facilities. Um, and it's usually just an oversight. You know, things get reported to us at the, at the committee level, the committee just kind of oversees them and make sure everything's copacetic and. This would not be something that normally gets voted on. The reason why this is on the agenda for a vote tonight. Is because some of the board members pointed out and we did some research and were able to, um, confirm. That somehow this got on to the general board agenda, um, for a vote. Previously, it, it had to do with the funding, but not a budget line, but not, you know, micromanaging whether we, you know, use two ply or one ply.
It was an inappropriate vote at that time too.
It would, yeah, it was probably, yeah, it was probably.
And I just didn't realize it until later that.
There was.
It was an inappropriate thing because we were discussing it. And so then I made a motion, but it really, I shouldn't have. And so that was my fault and here we are.
Yeah, so, and so to accord equal process to it now, um, I think it's important. Um, as some board members had, has, have brought up to, um, also have a vote on it now. It's not something we would normally vote on. Um, and it's something we've discussed ad nauseam. Um, so I mean, other than if anybody, you know, feels the need to make a statement or render any comment now. Um, we could, you know, go ahead and vote on it, but again, into, uh, any comments, Mary Ann, I see your hand.
I still have a comment because it's still seven thousand dollars. And we're worried about. You know, AP classes and band uniforms, but maybe we should worry about where we're spending paper money. That's all, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Christine, did you have your hand up? No, okay, anyone else? All right, I'll call the question. Um, there's a motion to approve the addition of paper towels at Daniel Hand High School for the remainder of the. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. I believe it was estimated to be about seven thousand dollars. Um, all in favor, aye? All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, it's seven to two. Thank you. Okay.
I know why anyone would think that that's an additional seven thousand. That's just what's in the budget under supplies.
Seven thousand dollars.
Correct. If I could speak to that, though, um, last year, Bill proposed and we did increase custodial supplies. If he. If he had, he would have had to increase it by fifteen thousand more if he had kept paper towels. Because the cost of everything went up, the cost of, you know, um, we, we talked about it quite a bit of, of everything that he does, you know, so. So that, there wasn't seven thousand. I just didn't want to think that there was fifteen thousand or seven thousand sitting there in the custodial supply line. That wasn't used. It was used last year on the increase of cost.
Right. But it's like you have the su, the line of supplies and it includes everything that he uses. It's, and it's not like we talk about, oh, how many, how much toilet paper and how much hand sanitizer and how much floor cleaner do you have? It's, it's supplies and then it's utilized for whatever he needs to utilize it for at his discretion, because that's what he does.
Well, I think Dr. Cook is saying is he came up with a budget and didn't include that. So that's why it's being added. So did something have to get caught to add this back in?
No, it was added back onto the, the budget after the, you know, administration made its recommended budget that fifteen thousand dollars was added back on. So it was not like something. Was reduced from that.
Yeah, and I agree with what Seth said. This should have been at the facility level, uh, committee and their vote was to put it back in, correct? But, right, so for that reason, I would support it.
Okay, so, um, they already voted on that. Next time, it's just a little leftover discussion. And next action item is a motion. And this gets into the policy committee stuff. Uh, action item twelve, motion to waive the second reading. And rescind the following policies, fifty-one hundred point five student fundraising activities. Fifty-one twenty point one, student insurance coverage, fifty-one twenty point two, reports of accidents. Fifty-one fifty, employment, fifty-one sixty, gifts to employees. I'm in motion. Seconded by Diane. I sense a theme here. Um, any discussion?
Um, I actually have a question. Um, the, yep, the gifts for the employees. Um, I know that Diane had mentioned it was going from the five series to the four thousand series. And, um, so what does that mean, I guess, number one? And number two. Um, I did read the policy and how, who is going to implement that policy as far as just kind of overseeing?
So Shipman and Goodwin did recommend just rescinding it, but at the policy committee, um, meeting, we talked about it. And there was some interest in keeping a policy because they didn't want, um. They didn't want excessive gifts to, to look like they were influencing teachers or anything. But the main point behind the rescission of this is because it's in the five thousand series, which is actually the students. And so if we were going to, um, have a policy that limits gifts to employees, it should really be under. The Personnel four thousand. So we are gonna look at it there and see if we want to have a policy. It's still under discussion at the Policy Committee level. There was just some interest in possibly keeping it and moving it. And so the, the actual details of the policy have not yet been worked out.
Part of the discussion was, I think the fist, the Policy Committee recognized that it might be a, a more proper place. To control the conduct of employees with respect, with regard to gift receiving. Rather than put the onus, the onus on students for gift giving.
So should we amend the motion and take that off and revisit it when the four thousand is clearer?
No, because I think the, the goal was to remove it as is because at, in either case, the Facilities Committee agreed. We didn't want it in that. I'm sorry, the policy. But the, the Policy Committee felt like they didn't want to keep it there. They wanted to listen to that advice from Shipman and Goodwin. But then had a separate thought that we should revisit it as a policy committee. Later to determine if it, you know, made sense to, to have a policy, but as applied to employees rather than students. Is that right to you?
That is correct.
But isn't the verbiage changing on, on that particular policy?
So it would be a whole new policy. Instead of like a revision of this policy, it would be a whole new policy in the four thousand series if. The Policy Committee decided that we want to keep some sort of, um. Rule or policy regarding the employees receiving gifts. You know, one of the things that we discussed was that we don't want to discourage showing appreciation. To teachers and personnel, but it was also discussed that we didn't want, you know, outrageous, um, gifts. You know, to be given. And that you can't really control, you know, what students give or do, but you can control what, uh, uh, an employee would accept. So it would be a completely separate policy. So there would be no, uh, reason that we could not rescind the policy. In the five thousand series, but we will revisit it to see if we want one in the four thousand series.
Okay.
Did that, I don't know if that helped.
No, but yeah, it helps. Thank you.
Mary Ann, is your hand up or are you just? False alarm. Okay, um, so unless there's any other further discussion on this, I, I would like to call a question. All right, seeing no further, um, discussion, all in favor of the motion to waive the second reading and rescind the following policies, fifty-one hundred point five. Student fundraising activities, fifty-one twenty point one, student insurance coverage, fifty-one twenty point two, reports of accidents. Fifty-one fifty employment and fifty-one sixty gifts to employees. All in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries nine, nothing. Thank you. Um, action item thirteen. Motion to rescind the following policies, ninety-five forty point eleven, news media service at meetings. Ninety-nine hundred, school board legislative program, ninety-nine ten, state legislative program. Fifty-one twenty point nine point four, bicycle and roller blade use. Fifty-one twenty point four point two point three, substance abuse counseling. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Diane, do I have a second? Seconded by Kathy, thank you. Um, all right, any discussion? Discussion. No, call a question. All in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Guys have it, nine, nothing. Thank you. On to action item fourteen, motion to approve the following policies, ninety-five ten. Time, place, and notice of meetings, fifty ninety point eight point one, search and seizure. Fifty ninety point three point one, student dress. Fifty-one forty-four point four, physical activity, undirected play, and student discipline.
So moved.
With my Diane. Have a second, I can, Galen. All right, can we discuss enough now?
I just have a.
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
So I want to thank, so for all of her hard work on policy and the Policy Committee. And, uh, in case anyone's interested, we rescinded forty-three policies in twenty twenty-three and we revised thirty-nine policies for a total of eighty-two policies.
Thank you, Seth. And thank you, Diane. That's, that's a lot of work. And, and this continues, this continues our process. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was talking to Diane.
This continues our process of modernizing our policies. Um, we've been working very closely with how, with, uh. With our, uh, shipment and good with our legal counsel, um, to, to, to update, modernize. Um, and make more relevant our policies. Now, we have a lot of policies that. You know, kind of repeated what the law already is by statute and we were able to, um, get rid of a lot of those and. Really make our policy manual easier to read, lighter, more current, um, and more sensible. So, thank you, the Policy Committee. And so for all of that. Um, okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries nine, nothing. Thank you. Action item fifteen, motion to accept the donation from the Jeffrey PTO, the Jeffrey Elementary School. In the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for field trips.
So moved.
So moved by Kathy, thank you. Seconded by Diane. Um, that's a wonderful donation. Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you to Jeffrey PTO.
Further discussion, all in favor, aye? Nay, any abstentions? Motion carries nine, nothing. Thank you. Action item sixteen, a motion to accept a donation from Steady Photography to Jeffrey Elementary School. In the amount of one thousand six hundred ten dollars and fifty-three cents for student photos. We have a motion. Uh, from Stephen. Any second?
Right.
Second from Diane. Uh, any discussion? Uh, again, wonderful donation. Thank you. All in favor, aye? Those nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries nine, nothing. Action item seventeen, motion to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting. I have a motion.
So moved.
Emily, thank you. Any second?
Second.
Second by Diane, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Any extensions? Motion carries nine, nothing. Thank you. Uh, action item eighteen, a motion to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education Budget Workshop. We have motion. Emily. Second, Steve.
Thank you. Um, I did raise, uh, a request to just change the wording a little bit at the, um, top of the minutes. Um, it just said that Mr. Kaskin did not leave the, uh, pledge of allegiance. And I prefer that to, it was, it was only because of inclement weather. Uh, that meeting was largely by Zoom and almost everybody was outside of this room. So there was no flag. So I just want the record to reflect that due to inclement weather, um, the Mr. Kaskin, uh. Dispensed with the recitation of the pledge of allegiance. Uh, I already said that as a note, so. Uh, I don't want anybody to throw rotten eggs at me because I'm anti-American. Um, so, uh, with that, I raised that as amendment. Um, does anyone second that amendment? That's not gonna, Galen, thank you. Um, uh, all in favor of, uh, the minutes for the January sixteenth, twenty-four Board of Ed Budget Workshop as amended? Say aye, aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? No extension. So it's eight. Zero, one, and the abstention was. Thank you very much. Uh, any recommendations for future agenda items? We're getting towards the end of the meeting, folks. It's exciting.
There's a change in the dates of importance.
Yes, dates of importance.
Uh, February twenty-seventh, the Policy Committee meeting was moved to the thirty.
The Facilities Committee is wrong too. Most of those are wrong. Half of those ones changed today. So just disregard that.
Okay.
Check your digital.
Thanks for the next, uh, meeting package. Anything else? Okay, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we get a second? Uh, to adjourn at nine thirteen.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those nay. Any extensions? All right, congratulations. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.
Have a good week.
Yeah, you too. Thanks for joining us online.